Recreational use. Under the last council's term, we had checked in with them to see whether or not they saw a future of that as an industry in Auburn. And we actually fully expected to probably have state regulations in place during that council's term and to put any local ordinances in place during that council's term. As of now, we still don't know what the state regulations will be for the cultivation, sale, and processing of adult-use marijuana, they're calling it recreational marijuana, essentially. So we wanted to take this opportunity to check in with this council and make sure that as we advocate for outcomes in the state law, as well as start to prepare for any local ordinances, that we kind of know where you're headed as the policy setters for the community on this issue. We have seen a substantial amount of investment around the medical program, also some abuse around the medical program, and we just want to make sure that we're prepared to deliver an ordinance and advocacy that's consistent with what you as a board would like us to do. With that, be happy to answer any questions, talk more about current status. Lieutenant Kugel's here as well. I think we can probably answer most of your questions around this as an industry and current status.
Yeah, I'm gonna open this up then. And thank you very much for that, for that kind of synopsis and bringing this up to speed. Open up to the council for debate in no particular order today. Counselor Titus?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, this has been one of the items I've been very interested in, and I understand that the state is dragging its heels on the retail marijuana. I was hoping that this process was gonna include everything, medical marijuana, retail marijuana, try to treat it like any industry, because they have had complaints where marijuana's being grown in neighborhoods, maybe in legal amounts, but it's still causing problems. So we need to maybe designate areas where that's allowed and not allowed, not just retail, not wait for the state to come up with their rules and regulations on retail. I want that too, but as a general policy, just like we would do on any industrial business that came to town, where you can't go there because of this. And I don't know that I've seen anything there. I know that right now, growing marijuana in a neighborhood follows whatever the codes and ordinances were already in place at that time, regarding odors and traffic and that kind of thing. So I guess I'm hoping that when we're ready, when the state's ready, we are ready, first of all, to come right out the gate, not have to wait six or eight months to write it. But also, it includes all of marijuana usage and growing and the production of and so on. Has that been going on? Have we been working on some sort of ordinance on that?
We really don't know what the ground rules are gonna be at the state level. So we had drafted some suggested kind of guidelines, brought those to the previous council, but until we really know what the state rules are, the only, right now you can't grow recreational marijuana, you can't sell recreational marijuana. So no, we don't, we don't have any standards for growing or selling or processing recreational marijuana. We have still relied on our odor standards for medical marijuana when it's grown for commercial purposes, but I don't think we have much of an ability to regulate marijuana when it's grown for personal use in residential zones.
Well, like when I first started this process, I understand that for caregivers and medical marijuana growers, say in Lewiston, there's a permit that they have to apply for, and they pay 500 bucks, or $500 a year or something, to have a permit to do it. We don't have such a permit or permit requirement here for medical marijuana.
We do not.
We do not. And so if somebody's a caregiver and they're growing, they got whatever the maximum is, which may be 30 or 40 plants, I'm not sure, depending on what they have for their caregiver list, can they do that anywhere in the city? And nobody can complain about it. When we're finding out, what we've seen is right near schools, there's somebody who's growing medical marijuana fairly close to a school. And I just want to make sure we have a complete guideline along with this to stop that from happening. Allow it to happen in places that it makes sense, but not allow it to happen in places that don't make sense.
Can jump in. So currently, there is, Eric said, there's nothing that's been out there, and there's limited regulations. And as far as the medical piece that you've addressed, that which is encompassed in the state, the current medical state law is, there's significant portions of that that are really unenforceable, or very difficult to enforce. So the Maine Sheriff's Association, who is contracted with Medical Marijuana Program to do enforcement, is finding themselves that they're often bringing complaints to the AG's office that are sitting. They are hoping for even more, for clarification and new rules, which were, some new rules, in fact, were due to come out, but those have been just recently put on hold. Those were due February 1st. Again, I'm talking medical. Those are put on hold at the last minute. Those would have helped the Sheriff's Association and local law enforcement deal with some of the issues that we're seeing with medical, just talking about that piece. So there is, the state really has to step up and clean up that bill, hopefully, and there's still talk of mixing the two and addressing both issues at once. Where it lands, I don't know. It seems to change daily, whether they're gonna address medical with recreational or not. But there are aspects, I think, that we, as a city, could, with some direction, we could take steps ordinance-wise and not necessarily wait. Is it possible, some of those would need to be amended as things unfold?
Okay, I don't wanna wait for...
But that's not, that's not a huge issue necessarily, but there is, there are some things that we can do on both aspects to kind of get out in front of it as you're talking.
Now, is it possible to start a fee-struck, because we, two years ago, this was brought up, and I don't think anything had done it. Lewiston has a permit.
I think, I think we can. It's part of policy. I mean, if we want to start getting ahead of this right now, or maybe it's too late to get ahead of this, but catch up with this and then get ahead of it.
Yeah, 'cause if somebody's gotta get a permit, at least we know where they are, and they have a permit.
Just to be, from our point of view too, as far as law enforcement, and Eric can weigh in on this as well, from the planning part and code, we really, really need, this whole meeting is really to get a direction from the council on, are we all in, are we partially in, are we not in? That's what we really need before, I think, before we should even, in my opinion, start looking too specifically at ordinances. And I know there may be some mixed opinions on that, and that's something that eventually has to come from the council as a group to point us in that direction, so we can start trying to come up with some ideas that make sense ordinance-wise and other things.
Let me try to focus this on a couple of things broad, then I'll let everybody speak to this. We've got some decisions to make as a city, and I think we all have probably some opinions, more strong than others, some more stronger than others. The question I'd like to ask the council at this point is, several, it's multi-part, so bear with me. Do you want marijuana smoked in your city? Do you want recreational use, I believe is the correct term, recreational marijuana use in Auburn? Do you want the economic impact on a positive side from commercial grow operations or medical grow operations? And third, if you do want, you know, recreational, or allow, as a city, for individuals to grow marijuana for recreational use outside of the medical caregiver aspect, how do we want to regulate that now before the state comes down either way? So there's a lot. I mean, I think if we start off with the first question, do we want to even entertain the fact that marijuana is gonna be utilized in a recreational area within Auburn, a recreational fashion within Auburn?
Mr. Mayor, one of the questions that might drive some of the decisions is that, your second point, which is about economically, what difference would it make? Can we get some general information about that from somewhere? I don't know. And I'm wondering, and thank you, Mr. Cousins and Lieutenant Kugel, this is really helpful. In the memo that we got, it says that locally staff has worked on locational criteria. Is that something that's, what does that mean?
So we, we right now allow the commercial cultivation of medical marijuana in any zone that allows for industrial, light industrial, or agricultural uses. So that pretty much covers every zoning district from the ag zone down to about the half-acre lot-sized residential districts. The in-town districts don't necessarily allow that, but we have seen people growing personal, for personal use on even smaller lots. Staff had drafted a, through our plan review committee, staff had drafted a list of questions or issues that we thought you might want to cover with any eventual ordinance. We brought that to the city council, and we had drafted that knowing that the council wanted to be open to this industry. The council didn't want to pursue many of those standards as a group at that time, and really wanted to be, to be open to that as an industry. So we don't have anything in place. We do have a good list of what's allowed and what zones, but we have not created any marijuana-specific standards within the local ordinances.
Any other comments? Counselor Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been reading the things that I've read, well, obviously, I've been reading things I've read, in the Lewiston Sun Journal about how the lawmakers in Augusta wouldn't extend the moratorium on marijuana sales. They wouldn't agree to, I guess, they were supposed to come up with legislation by the first of the month, and then there was some bills put in to extend it at least till the end of session to come up with something, and then they were also saying, let's wait till the next legislature comes in. And I guess the committee that's handling the bills are still looking or trying to come up with something, but as of today, they still haven't. I mean, I'm, I mean, I'm pretty sure that you guys are reading the same things and keeping up with what the legislature is doing or not doing. I mean, I'm concerned. I mean, having these type of recreation places popping up in any city that's gonna allow them to come in. But Auburn has let the municipal marijuana come in. We've got a lot of facilities set up in Auburn, from what I understand, so we've already opened the door and welcomed them.
Auburn does have a lot of the production within the state. Four out of the eight dispensaries within the state produce here, but our, my sense anyways, and I'd welcome Lieutenant Kugel's opinion, is that those large-scale industrial production facilities haven't been where we've had our problems. It's been more on the retail outlet side for medical patients.
Lieutenant Kugel?
Yes?
What do you, what does the police department think? I mean, the frank, honest, I mean, politics, or, I mean, are you all, what are you seeing on the streets? What's going on right now? We've opened the genie's out of the box, so to speak?
It is.
How is this affecting you and the department, and, you know, obviously, the citizens of Auburn right now, from a law enforcement standard?
Well, it's, I'll tell you that, as Eric, I think, just indicated, the most obvious and most prevalent abuse is with the caregivers, the individual caregivers. That's not an endorsement of the commercial or industrial, but the law was written to regulate them. It's much easier to regulate them, and they have a lot to lose, quite frankly, with all the hoops and the money that they have invested. The caregivers, again, this is on the medical side, but the caregivers do present a significant challenge to us, and it's a, it is a significant safety concern. They're growing in multifamilies. There's little requirement for them to have any type of inspection or whatever. We do have several commercial buildings approaching probably 29 that we know about in the city. I say "commercial space," not necessarily buildings, but "commercial space." And these are ones that have gotten electrical permits, building permits, to grow for medical To do it, to follow the rules as they were intended in the medical marijuana program, for the amount of money that these folks have invested, it's, it's pretty near impossible to make a profit and to cover their costs, doing it under the guides and the spirit of the law that's in place. And that's the problem, is that it's so ambiguous, and it's so difficult to enforce. So there's very little oversight. So when you hear that the medical marijuana program is this example of what the law should be, I would argue against that, that there's a lot of problems that need to be corrected in the medical marijuana program. We have a lot of people that are setting up shop in Auburn, because quite frankly, it's been an open market here, and it's almost been a welcome market, and if that's the council's direction, then that so be it. But they've opened up and invested here, knowing full well the retail side and wanting to get on the ground level, similar to what you read in the paper, that's very accurate. They're setting up so that they're on the ground level and ready. When retail comes, that they can throw out the shingle, the dorm hat, or whatever, and start, and start producing. It's difficult to give you specific numbers on, you know, overdoses or all this type of stuff, as far as the negative aspects. We know our SROs report more kids, you know, high at school in possession of marijuana. It's still early to give those numbers. Colorado isn't just now coming out with numbers, you know, early on, the numbers were great. Everyone was touting how it's been a success, things are down. Well, now they're seeing the opposite of that. Youth, the highest number of youth on marijuana is in Colorado. That's a recent study by HIDA, which is federal agency. Same thing with adults, significantly higher, traffic crashes related to marijuana. Now there's systems in place, it's taken several years to be able to even track this stuff and to understand it. Traffic crashes are up substantially, marijuana-related traffic crashes. And that's in Colorado. What we see here, you know, just recently, we've had an incident on Newberry Street in an apartment, multifamily apartment building, where we went in and it was a commercial operation. This is a caregiver who had extraction devices, all sorts of canisters of gas, dry ice, you name it, it was all in there, all to make what they call dabs, an extraction of the THC and something that you put into a pipe and you heat up and you smoke. I got an education myself, quite frankly, on all the ins and outs of this. This kid should, could have been, should have been a chemist, and the knowledge that he had about how to do this. But there was another family living on the first floor, it was a three-unit building, and this was just last week, and we had the fire department, we had city electrician, we had everybody in there, and no regulation, no knowledge. We called in the state, again, the Sheriff's Department Association, who does the enforcement, came in, identified this, all the issues with it, and basically, he was given warnings to clean up the mess and get it out. And they'll be back to do a follow-up, but again, very little bite in the law, and just, but that's a substantial safety risk. That's not the only one we've seen.
That was kind of what I was hoping for, Mr. Mayor, when we started this two years ago, was not just develop retail, but look at the overall thing. And if you're telling me, right, we're not allowed to set rules in Auburn to say that's against our ordinance, and you have to stop doing it? If we see somebody that's taken the whole third floor of an apartment building and made it into a grow operation, we can't have an ordinance in Auburn that says you can't do that?
There are already existing ordinances that were, he was clearly in violation of.
So that's not follow-up? I mean, that's close him down. That's make sure he gets, I mean, if our ordinance doesn't have teeth, we're never gonna win this battle, so...
So he, he would have been in violation of electrical codes. He was using the building for a commercial use that wasn't allowed on that street. We can stop that. And that's honestly the biggest fear with those growing operations, is that they would be in an older residential building where they overload the electrical system, there's a fire, and somebody gets hurt.
That's volatile meth lab.
Those are the ones that we, when we find, we're able to close those under existing ordinances, but it would be helpful to know what the council wants if we want to have specific standards for where those things can go. We could, we could make it more specific than it is right now.
Okay. Counselor Walker, last comment, then we're gonna, we're gonna do a little straw poll here.
I just want to comment. No matter what kind of laws we have, you're gonna have people like them that are gonna break the laws, and you're gonna have to catch them. It's like anything else, when they break the law, you catch them, and then we put them out of business, we hope, or they move somewheres else, and you catch them. But because we open up something that has good laws, doesn't mean that we're gonna defer these people away from us, 'cause it isn't gonna. But this, this is gonna, is gonna go on either in our city or the city across the bridge or the town next to our left or right. So I don't know why we wouldn't want to make sure that we set it up right and we allow it, because it's all, it's gonna be all around us anyways. So we lose out if we don't take advantage of something. Now, what that something is, I'm not sure, but we, we just can't say no. We can't, it would be like saying to the people that want to open up all these beer breweries around us, you know, no, can't do it no more, because, you know, we don't have enough law enforcement to enforce the law. So I think we have to move forward with some good judgment, and I do think we need some laws that can work with the state once they come up with something.
Okay, so this would, I'd just like to get a consensus on this issue. So I'm gonna do a straw poll, something I don't think I've done before in a workshop, but this is what I think, from a policy standpoint, I think we need to look at, and this is what I want to see if we have consensus on, forming a work group along with city staff in order to come up with draft ordinances that would help put some boundaries on marijuana usage, recreational usage, retail, potential retail operations, and so forth. I'd like to get ahead of this now. I think it's been a, I think it's time to kind of set a goal to get these ordinances drafted over the next few months, if that's hopefully realistic. But I think we agree, and I think you probably already have something, Eric, drafted up, or at least some templates to go off of, of other successful implementations in municipalities around the country.
We, we could draft something to address the current medical marijuana industry. I think it's difficult to draft something now for recreational, because we have no idea what the state standards are going to be. If we end up with a thousand-foot setback around a school property, our downtown's out of the question, so we don't even have to worry about standards in the downtown. You know, there are a lot of things like that that will impact where it's allowed, and we, we should have six or eight months after the state law passes, while the state goes through a rulemaking process, to, to come up with recreational standards. I think it's more important that, at this point, that we have a general sense of where the council wants to go, so that people that are coming to see us, we work really hard to have a predictable environment. We can tell them if Auburn is open for business for this, or if they should proceed with caution and maybe look somewhere else.
I think that's important, and I heard what you have to say, and I want to reiterate that though the state has yet to make their final decision, and it may not happen even this year, and there's potential that this could be kicked down the can to the next administration in Augusta, but if we have a set of standards, even if, you know, from, on all aspects of marijuana, guidelines, guiding principles, in the form of ordinances, even though they might become obsolete at a future time and have to be amended, I think it tells, it gives, and from a couple of different fronts, it gives the citizens a clear direction on what their council wants the direction of their city to take, and also will send some clear messages either way to people that might be looking to Auburn for future retail operations or so forth, things that aren't yet, you know, passed through Augusta, if that makes sense. Does that make sense to the council? You know, I think at this point in time, it's, it's time to almost get ahead of it a little bit, so we're ready, so we're not reacting so much, that we're just being proactive in our changes when the time comes, if it does come.
Mr. Mayor, I agree with you. It would be helpful to have maybe a little more information in terms of making a decision, and I'm talking about economic, economically. People are, I think, are assuming that this is going to be a boon to the community, but in terms of what it might cost in other ways, whether it's with law enforcement, and we can't come up with exact numbers, but it would be helpful, and maybe that's part of the working group that can come up with that, it would just be helpful for me to get a little more information about that.
I think it's, I mean, I honestly think it's gonna be helpful for everyone. I mean, there's some numbers being thrown around at the state level that we've been involved with, looking at different rev share agreements based upon the type of activity. But then again, if you're dealing with underground, for lack of a better term, commercial grow operations, like you just described a moment ago, that's, you can't tax that. You can't, it's hard to regulate that, and we have to make sure that if it's gonna be legal, that it's to the forefront and, you know, not taking away the very, in other words, the underground movement on this. It's not like beer, you can make some beer in your house. I absolutely agree with Counselor Walker on that. But you can't make the sheer amount of beer necessary, you know, comparing it to marijuana. You know, I mean, you need, this is a little bit different aspect, and we also have to come into the grips, I think, now versus kicking the can down the road, on whether or not we want to have marijuana social clubs. What direction do we want to have our city take with regards to the utilization or the use of marijuana publicly, and what are our businesses say? And by addressing this, I think we're gonna bring all these issues to the table and give us some thoughtful debate. So, Counselor Hayes?
I guess I agree to form a working committee, but I think in the meantime, I think, I guess in my mind, we're close to business until that working group has come together, until we have clear guidance from the state. So I guess, working group, yes, I think, you know, one thing, I guess, for the new councilors, we don't have those questions that were brought before the council earlier, and I think we all need to see those. That's certainly something this working group would start working at again.
One thing to remember, too, is that according to the state, people can't do retail marijuana until we allow them to. If the state tomorrow come up with their regulations, said, okay, we're done, each city and town has to agree to it before it happens. These people, these towns that are putting moratoriums in, they don't necessarily have to do a moratorium, because they can't come here unless we pass a resolve or whatever it takes. Is that true?
You are, well, you're correct. The current version is, it's basically an opt-in, where the community has to opt in.
Right.
However, what, what towns have done, and maybe for symbolic reasons or whatnot, I think they've, they've passed moratoriums to basically say, and to, you know, to folks that, hey, this is gonna be scrutinized, and there'll be more regulation coming, which we don't have now. And so to send that message, if that is your message, is important, because we have, again, back to medical and the ones we were talking about, we have people opening, beginning to open storefronts, where they're, you know, quite frankly, not following the medical marijuana law as it was intended, although many aspects of it are not being enforced, and they're theoretic, for all practical purposes, opening up a retail marijuana shop in a storefront under medical. And that's happening in Auburn now and other communities. And they're, what they're doing is they're rotating, they're allowed five patients, so they're what they call rotating their card, or they're a fifth patient, which allows, they can establish the relationship. I have four people, and then you're my fifth. I establish a relationship as you come in the door. I document the information, I sell you your product, edible marijuana, whatever it is, and then when you leave, the paperwork is done, and I'm open to a new fifth. That's not what the law was intended to do. Anybody on the enforcement side realizes that. Otherwise, why would they have set up dispensaries? Anyone would be a dispensary. And so we have these two separate entities, but we have caregivers operating as small dispensaries, if you will. So if a moratorium, I mean, that's why, to answer your question, that's why some of the moratoriums have been put in place, to say no to this type of stuff, so people understand, hey, you can set up all you want, but you're not necessarily gonna be retail in the capacity or even in the location that you've done. And it sort of puts, I think, people on notice that there's more to come. Does that, does that make sense?
With that said, I just want to thank Lieutenant Kugel and Eric, Mr. Cousins, for, for coming up here and giving us this brief. Just by a show of hands on the council, all those in favor of forming a work group, yet to be determined, of course, and for going forth and drafting some policy around marijuana usage? If we can, please, a show of hands.
Mayor, does that go with stating that we have a moratorium in effect until we have certain standards or ordinances in place?
In this venue, in a workshop, I can't, we can't push forth a moratorium or make that policy decision at this, at this venue. We could take it under advisement, I think we should talk about that, but at this point...
Well, I think, you know, if we're tied both creating, right, but I guess, I just, from my understanding, are we suggesting, and I think we're, from the police department, I think they're looking for some direction. In the meantime, are they considering that we're in a moratorium?
We can't make that deter, we can't make that, we can't state that. We can't, we can't make a policy decision at this point in time during a workshop on whether or not there's a moratorium or not. So I can't give, we can't give the direction as a council, either yes or no. So we can't be very clear, there's no direction outside of, you know, do we have council support right now to implement a work group and start working on ordinances and policy around marijuana?
Mr. Mayor, if we have a delayed time before any of this is formalized, I know, you know, I can only imagine the position the police department is in, and I know that I have relatives who live in Colorado, and they've seen the highs come down low. You know, it was great at the beginning, but there's no way to monitor, there's no way to prosecute, you know, there's no way to tell, you know, to test, to see if somebody's driving on the influence, that kind of thing. So as far as, I think that if we had this, this committee, that it would be a fast-acting committee, a short, you know, it would happen, you know, as immediately as possible, and along with that, I would, I really would highly recommend that we do a little research with places who have had, you know, marijuana in their states for a long period of time, you know, and make sure that we can add that to, to the mix, and I think the research would help greatly. My feeling, I've always felt that, you know, there are a lot of people who need the medical marijuana, and it seems to be doing a good job for those individuals, people with cancer, et cetera. And, and I think that growing for that purpose is much easier to regulate, but when it's recreational, you know, one of the things that I was told by my relatives in Colorado is that, you know, they end up, you know, growing on their own, for their own, but they're growing more than they should, and nobody's regulating it. It's being sold, they're profiting, the individual's profiting, it's being sold across, you know, county lines, state lines, so that, that's an area, big area of concern for me.
Well, yeah, I think all those things absolutely need to be brought up during the working group. So with a show of hands, do we, we're gonna, due to time, we're gonna, we're gonna stop the comments, and just move on to whether or not the council agrees to forming a work group and taking up the task of setting policy regarding all aspects of current marijuana use. By a show of hands, how many people are in favor? Okay, against, and abstaining, one. Okay, so six to one, it passes. We'll work together in logistics to create this work group and move forward on this. Jim, I want to thank you for your time. Jim, I want to thank you for your time. Next on the agenda is a presentation about smart growth by Doug Green and Nancy Smith. Good evening, Mr. Green, Mrs. Smith.
Good evening, Mayor Levesque, City Manager Creighton and the City Council. Good to be here tonight. And also wanted to, again, introduce Nancy Smith, who is the Executive Director of Grow Smart Maine. And I will get things set up here momentarily. But I wanted to just briefly preface a little bit of what I want to talk to you about tonight, in that I've been a planner for over 25 years, actually over 20 years, I don't want to go too far with that. But, but in the course of those years of planning, probably the mid-'90s, smart growth kind of came around the countries, and certainly became aware of that, and I've been working in various communities and utilizing those principles. So, it seemed like a good opportunity, as I've been working on walkability in downtown, you know, we had some recent projects, the Troy Street project, that stimulated some more discussion about neighborhoods, parking, walkability. And in the course of doing that, that work, which I have been doing, and I look forward to getting back to you in the near future on that, it was pretty obvious to me that there's an opportunity to look at a bigger picture, that there's more to making a great community than just walkability. And I also was able to make a presentation last fall about our new Auburn project, some other planning initiatives, our form-based code, our adaptive reuse ordinance, at that Grow Smart Summit back in the fall. And then more recently, I was able to be at a Grow Smart Board Meeting, and I think it just kind of put me in a, in a thought process of, I wanted to put together a proposal, and to come to you and talk to you about what, what it could be like for Auburn to become a smart growth community. And, so the proposal I'm, I'm going to be bringing to you tonight really deals with describing to you the 10 smart growth principles, and how they can help provide direction and maybe more meaning to our community as far as policy directives, development decisions, and I think most importantly, it could really provide an opportunity to, another way to market Auburn in a way that's going to be really attractive to other businesses, outside businesses, more visitors, we want to bring more people here, we think it's got a lot of merit. So, I look forward to having this opportunity to have Nancy here tonight, and to be able to talk to you about what these, these principles are. Well, smart growth, in its total, really deals with three different realms. There's the environmental, social realm, and economic realm. And smart growth looks to use these 10 principles of smart growth to balance out our community so we achieve more of a balanced approach to our social life, our economic life, and environmental realm. And in the middle, we have sustainable development. So, I'd like to go over briefly the, the 10 principles of smart growth. And the thing that I, I kind of wanted to relate to you as much as anything, is that in a lot of ways, we're almost there. There's a lot of things that we've been doing, there's a lot of things that have been in our comprehensive plan over the last eight, 10 years. We can go back to the ADAPT Plan for downtown Auburn that was created in 1997, and that has all those same principles in there. So, let me quickly just run through these principles and give you some examples of what we have been doing, and some things that we have room to grow and do some more improvements. The first one is a mix of land uses. And we already have our downtown, we have a form-based code in place that has a lot of variety of types of uses that can happen. For example, more recently, we're getting close for a groundbreaking of a mixed-use development with retail on the first floor, and workforce housing, and some market-rate housing on Spring Street. We want to take advantage of compact building design. That's also saying we want to look at ways to keep development in our downtown area, where we have really high rates of property value. It makes more sense to invest in infill redevelopment, to utilize the infrastructure that we already have here, to promote compact development, some density where it's appropriate. You know, we can see, we have older areas of our downtown that still keep some historic buildings in place, and more recently, we've been able to hopefully set the groundwork for a potential development on Troy Street. We look to for smart growth principles number three, creating a range of housing opportunities and choices. That's just a wide variety of homes that you can find in Auburn. There's some great multifamily opportunities for people to move into or to invest in. And another thing that we all know, that's, I think, very attractive in today's economic climate, is the lower cost of housing here in Auburn is a very attractive feature that we should be able to use to, to draw people here. We want to create walkable neighborhoods, and this is getting full circle back around to what I was originally talking about, something I've been spending quite a bit of time on and look forward to doing more work for our downtown. But we've got kind of some mixture of, of some, some areas, some not so good, some good. And so, there's areas that we, we should be looking for making our streets and sidewalks, not the streets walkable, but the sidewalks walkable. There's a, on the lower right, we have a, a light post right in the middle of the sidewalk. That's a problem we want to be addressing, that kind of thing. But we also have our new Auburn Village Center Plan, which I look forward to coming to you in the next few months and giving you an update on where that project's going. And that's going to be a great project for walkability, new trail system that will connect to our River Walk, it will connect to our art wall. And then we have, up the upper right, we have the grand opening of a Barker Mill Trail Extension in New Auburn, which has been a really nice, well-used trail. Number five is fostering a distinctive, attractive community with a strong sense of place. You may have, may not have heard of placemaking, that's a really important part and component of making a great community, making a place that you want to stay in and live and have our children stay here. Upper, upper right, we have one of the St. Louis Bells. Really looking forward to finding a, a structure, a final home for the four St. Louis Bells in the new Auburn Village Center Plan. And that in itself is going to make that project really stand out as a special place along our rivers, and be a place that people want to go to. We have the art wall, that we've heard discussions about, it's maybe time to think about renovating that, looking for some new work on that. We have our, our Festival Plaza, which is a great attraction. We had a farmer's market this year. So, we've got good things going in Auburn in that direction. We also want to preserve our open space, farmland, take advantage of our natural beauty and critical environmental areas. We have the ag study, which is currently underway, we'll have to see what, what comes out of that, that very important work. But we have lots of opportunities in our natural parks for connecting trails, maybe mountain biking, those kind of things. So, a lot of opportunity there. We also want to strengthen and direct development towards existing communities. Gets back around to trying to focus on developing our downtown and, and our downtown area neighborhoods. This is an area out south Main Street, near the Huston Farm. We don't have a lot of sprawl development here, we're fortunate, because we have had a strong ag zoning to keep that away from our, our farmland. We want to provide a variety of transportation choices. We have a complete streets policy that's directing our engineering and public services department on their road projects. We're getting bike lanes put in wherever possible. And as you can see, we have a transportation center now that I know is going to be discussed in part after us. And so, yes, we have a lot of things going on for our transportation choices. We want to make development decisions predictable, fair, and cost-effective. We have a plan review committee, if you are not aware of that, this is, these are imposters, this is not, this is not the real plan review committee, but they act like it. But it's a great opportunity for developers to have a very comprehensive review, very fair, get a lot of good, good feedback in one sitting. And then, as you know, in your role as public elected officials, that you have to deal with the public, you want to be doing these same things yourself. And finally, we want to encourage community and stakeholder collaboration in development decisions. That's something our office with economic and community development, we do on a daily basis. We have to do this on an ongoing process with our work with the planning board, working with neighborhoods. Again, it's something you have to work with on a regular basis. So, I will work towards summarizing this in a moment, but I wanted to give Nancy just a few minutes maybe to talk about what Grow Smart is doing, and again, we want to welcome her here today.
Well, thank you. So, again, my name is Nancy Smith, I live in Monmouth, and have been with Grow Smart Maine for eight years. We are a statewide organization, our office is in Gardner. And what you're seeing is the outline of what we work with other communities across the state to try to achieve. I think that as you consider the proposal, there are some really interesting dynamics to it. This is not an additional project for you to take on. We find that when you bring together all of the different components of the amazing things that are already happening in the city, this is a great way to talk about how they're interconnected. And oftentimes, people may think, well, these things, you're all over the place. You're doing sidewalks, you're taking care of farms, you're dealing with the downtown. And to be able to say they actually fit together, it's actually quite intentional to be taking on these different components. The other thing that I hope might be appealing to you is you would be the first smart growth community acknowledged as such in Maine. When Doug came to us with this idea, following the board meeting that he attended to get to know us a little bit better, I gave it some thought, and I think it's very doable to have a voluntary designation that communities could take on. As a comparable, Maine Farmland Trust has a farm-friendly community designation that is purely voluntary, that communities can choose to use. And I'm working with a group, we're called the Kennebec West Farmland Working Group, and there are three towns just west of Augusta. One of our strategies is if each of these towns volunteers to be farm-friendly designation, it's a way to market ourselves to farms and farm infrastructure businesses. So, there's a really interesting opportunity, again, to do something fully voluntary, fully voluntary, not an extra project you do, but a way to talk about what you do as a really comprehensive approach to making Auburn a place where people, even more people are going to want to live, work, and play here. And to have this as a pilot project that we could consider bringing to other communities, to say Auburn has led the way, are there other communities in Maine that would like to voluntarily sign up for this designation as being smart growth communities? And doing as Doug has done, is highlight some of the things that you're proud of that you're doing to move it forward. So, I'm here to support the, the work that Doug is doing on this, to offer any assistance we can through the process, and to hear some feedback from you all on what you're thinking about this proposal. Thanks.
So, I think I've already covered all these points right here, but in your packet, I provided some additional information, and put in, in your packet, a draft resolution. Of course, in today's age of Googling, I was able to find some other examples in other states that have made, I think, something of a similar type of move to make themselves, proclaim themselves a municipality, to, to enact a resolution, to become a grow, a smart growth community. So, I'm hoping this is something that can stimulate some thought, stimulate some discussion from you all. It's, I'm glad to report, as in the information sheet, this is very little cost involved, is a, this really is a, a way of looking at things, and we think it can be very beneficial, so, as well as Nancy, we're both very interested to hear your thoughts.
Thank you very much for the both of you for coming here today. Obviously, there's a lot of thought and process that's going along in this. Obviously, there's a draft resolve that I think the council needs time to go over, and bring it up on a, a future agenda item, potentially. A couple of questions, though, I think. Smart growth, I mean, listen, the devil's in the details, of course. The name is a wonderful thing, and everybody's for smart growth, because the opposite is dumb growth, and, well, nobody wants that, not doing. It was interesting, just as a, as kind of some information to the council and everybody else, I was gifted with a loan of some, you know, beautiful pictures of downtown Auburn about 100 years ago, plus or minus. And a lot of what you're talking about today was there back in 1869, before and after, until someone in their infinite wisdom decided that wasn't no longer relative, in, I think, the '60s and '70s. So, we've been there before, as a community, I think as a country as well. I will say that, while, while I like this, I will give caution and let the council ask some questions, too, while we have the subject matter experts here. Adding ideas, concepts, ways of thought is great, but there comes a point where you have exhausted, you know, your capacity to absorb, and what can this replace, and what can this take away? Because we are ordinance upon ordinance, zone upon zone, it's so convoluted and complicated that frankly, the only people who understand everything are the people that work within city government, not the regular majority of people in the city, especially myself. So, with that said, whereas I strongly promote growing in a smart fashion, I'm not sure if this is the best way to go right now without a further dive into our zones, currently what we're doing, and also asking yourselves, are we controlling the free market too much? Are we allowing free market principles to go? Are we providing just guidelines? Or are we providing a way in which people have to think in order to develop? And in one sense, talking about a downtown controlled sprawl, are we also at the same token saying, if you want to go and build a house on four acres of land in outer Auburn, and you own the land, you can't do that, or you're going to be discouraged against? So, and I'm not saying that's yes or no, I'm not looking for the answer, but thoughts that have come up with new policies, new principles, old is new again, that's great. But what is the ramifications? And how do we make government more efficient and more apt to grow through free market principles than concerning everything into a, a too much of a funnel, if you would? So, I've spoken enough, I apologize. I'll start off to my right on this time, side, with Councilor Young. You have any comments or questions, I should say? More questions right now, because this is something we'll be taking up probably later.
No, I have a lot of questions, but I can't put them all together. So, there's a lot to think about. Actually, it's a lot to think about. I pass right now.
Councilor Lasagna?
I, I think when people think of smart growth off the top of their heads, they think of the built-in natural environment, and I appreciate that two of the circles in your Venn diagram have to do with social and economic, and I don't, I want to make sure that the social nurturing community does not get left behind as we're thinking about the other aspects of this. I appreciate what Mr. Mayor was saying about what are the, the economic ramifications of this, but also we need to understand what are the, the social ramifications of this. Thank you.
Councilor Hayes?
I guess I'm very supportive of this approach, and I would like to see this resolve come to us sooner than later. I, I think it's generalized enough, and I think, as presented, it really frameworks what we're doing already. And it's just kind of putting, it's not taking, changing ordinances, it's not expanding our ordinances, it's really just giving a framework for why we have been doing things as we have been doing, and we've been kind of following these 10 points already. So, I would like to see this resolve, may need to, you know, be fleshed out word-wise a little bit, but I'm more than in favor of this.
Councilor Titus?
Thank you. First, I want to start by saying I hope we're going to see more, because I was a little bit nervous that we were going to have a 15-minute workshop, and the next meeting we'll have a resolve to vote on. Because one of the things that bothers me is the resolve itself, and you said you maybe Googled an example of somebody else's resolve, or if this was written catered to Auburn specifically, but there's a lot in here that should make us a little bit disturbed if we vote for this as a resolve. For instance, when you look at that we're going to enforce and educate property owners about and use policies that reduce sprawl, preserve open spaces, we're setting policy in a resolve. I hope we can do that with ordinances. And we have, you know, we have the form-based code, and we have a lot of other things going on with the ag zone, so that our word would be mostly in those, and not a subjective sentence in a resolve that can be interpreted by any staff member to say, well, wait a minute, it says in here in this resolve, we should be doing this. That's dangerous, I think, if it's, if it's that vague. Get it, now, but I hope we can have more discussion on this, so we can look at it and say, okay, what have we got that already is fit within the form-based code, fits what we've already got? Now, what do we need to work on that's in here that we want to do? Like, if we want to reduce sprawl, well, this council's going to make that decision with the ag zone study coming up. We'll have many opportunities to say, okay, this is what we're going to do to slow that down or prevent it. So, I'm a little bit nervous about that, and- So I'm a little bit nervous about that, and certain things like collaboration with stakeholders. I think in the past, we've not done a very good job. When we decide on a project, a lot of it is decided behind closed doors, and then it comes out and it's done before a lot of stakeholders even have a chance to think about what's going on. If we're going to do that, having it in a resolve and part of these 10, we better be doing it, if we've said we're going to do it. Because in this council, we'll receive phone calls and letters saying, wait a minute, it says here that you're going to involve stakeholders in collaboration with this development, and I didn't hear about it until a week before the meeting, or two weeks before the meeting, and then I didn't have any. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I like the idea, but I don't think we can decide a 15-minute workshop and then vote on a resolve. We need to talk about every facet of this, and if we install it, okay, eventually maybe we become a smart growth city. Because we've actually installed it with an ordinance, or with something that has teeth that's going to make it happen. Just my.
Councilor Forney.
Yes, my fellow councils have made some excellent points thus far. It's really great to ponder each one of those, they're all very viable. For me, this is like, I go back to my education background, and a good way to teach is thematically, where you have a theme, and everything you teach goes around that theme. And I also think about this as painting a picture. So when you look at, you know, the concept behind this is just, you know, growing smartly. If we have a vision about how we want to grow, and I see all of the areas being touched upon are really great, and I wish that we could bring back some of our magnificent buildings that were destroyed in the late '60s, '70s, it's a shame. But however, this could probably help us bring some of that beauty back. And just looking at the postcards that you have, you know, those pictures that are in there just tells us, there was great planning involved here in Auburn, beautiful, beautiful buildings. So I think that this is a really good strategy, and it's a really good directive for us to follow. I don't think it's going to be difficult. I think all it is, or, you know, constraining. I think what it is, it just gives us a vision, like we're all going with the same mantra. Okay, if we're going to build something, does it follow these? You know, so that way, it's all going to kind of go well together. That's my vision of that. So I really like this idea, and thank you.
Councilor Walker.
I like this idea. I think we need to expand on it even some more, but the downtown neighborhood, that is going to be something that's going to, I think, get bigger and bigger for us, especially the downtown Auburn itself, and having a place for the children, the seniors, that can balance. We've never had that, we've never actually approached that. It's time that we do that, and it'll all work out. Special places for special people, and having them being able to connect and making it worthwhile. So I'm on board with this. I think you're moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Councilor Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too like the concept, because I think it's going to open up more dialogue on what we do today as well as in the future. That if we come up with a proposal for something, there'll be more discussion before we act, and we won't react. We'll do it in a manner that is, as the thing says, smart. And we may find out, once we get going, it may not be right for that particular part of the city. But at least we've had the chance to talk with the community in that neighborhood, or the city as a whole, before we commit and go headfirst into it. I mean, we had discussions for the Adapt Plan, but we've never really revisited it. And today, the plans have changed from what the Adapt is. I mean, the original Adapt Plan wanted us to totally open up the open space in front of the river. Now we're trying to change it so that we're filling in the space to make smarter use of the downtown, by trying to fill in the open space, do storefronts downstairs if we can do it, and apartments up. So on the surface, I'm for this, as long as it involves more people. And like Council Walker says, I mean, he thinks it's a good thing. I mean, I don't always agree with everything he says, like, or all the other counselors, but I'm aligned with him on this one. I think it's a positive move that we can go forward. And I'm not as afraid of this as I thought I would be.
Well, thank you very much. At this point, I think we have enough information right now. We're going to, we'll be in contact, of course. But thank you very much for your time tonight.
Yeah, and I'd like to certainly keep information flowing, and I appreciate your comments tonight, all well-taken, and I'll look forward to providing more information and talking more. I'm glad we could have this discussion.
Oh, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, this is the last workshop item. We're going to be having City Manager Peter Creighton, as well as Marsha Bennett from Lewiston Auburn Transit Committee, presenting a little bit more about LATC budgetary concerns, as well as ridership, and a whole host of other information.
You want to run this?
I'll run it.
Am I speaking?
I'll start.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors. Tonight, Marsha Bennett, who's the Transit Coordinator for the LATC, and I, as Vice Chair of the LATC, will be providing this presentation to you on the LATC. It's a little bit of history as to where we've been and where we're headed. The Chair, Dennis Otte, wasn't able to be here, so Marsha is going to be talking about this presentation as we go through it, and I'll assist as best I can. Marsha.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me come tonight. This is a pre-information session before the budget. This is just to get everybody up to speed on the Transit Committee, and hopefully answer any questions or be ready so when the budget preparation comes around, you know, it'll be a more clear understanding of where LATC is coming from. The first slide, as you can see, the name is now on the outside of the building. So thank Auburn staff and LATC for being able to fund that sign. It actually looks really good, and it does make the building look more finished. To start off, the Lewiston Auburn Transit Committee, actually, public transit in Lewiston Auburn started back in the 1940s, and it was really interesting with Mayor Levesque's comments as he was looking back at photos and noticed that the downtown started falling apart during the '60s and '70s. And that's about when privately operated public transit started falling apart in Lewiston Auburn as well. The system up until then was entirely funded, it was by Hudson Bus Lines, it was privately operated, and at that time, ridership and the fares that came in actually paid for operating the system. As the mills started going, closing doors, people started owning cars, people started moving out from the downtown, ridership started going down, and public transit, Hudson Bus Lines came to the cities and said, we can't keep operating public transit, we need assistance. In order to get assistance at that time, they were looking at getting federal assistance from the Federal Transit Administration. So the cities at that time formed the Lewiston Auburn Transit Committee. They created an interlocal agreement that basically it was this committee was going to run the transit system, and they were going to actually own the system. So the cities own the fixed route transit system in Lewiston Auburn. I actually had a bus driver ask me the other day, do you own this place? I was over at the Auburn Bus Station, and I said, no, no, no. The cities own the bus station, and the Transit Committee just maintains it on behalf of the cities, they operate it. So it's not owned by AVCOG, it's not owned by ATRC, it's the Lewiston Auburn Transit Committee as a vehicle through the cities. So the interlocal agreement that was created, it passes on the administrative responsibilities of running the system to the Transit Committee. So the Transit Committee has been given the authority to secure federal funds on behalf of running the transit system. So the money since 1976 has been coming from Federal Transit Administration, and recently, the system started getting money from Maine DOT. Up until recently, all the funds, originally, the money was coming directly from FTA. Then Maine DOT came in and said, no, you're going to be getting the money through us. So at that time, the Transit Committee was a sub-recipient through the Maine Department of Transportation. So all the grants were coming through Maine DOT, and we answered to, we, the Transit Committee answered to the Maine Department of Transportation for all compliance. Part of the interlocal agreement said that the Transit Committee could enter into binding contracts. So that would be contracts for grants and contracts for services. It wasn't until 1995, I believe, that the Transit Committee actually went out to bid for a fixed route operator. When the Transit Committee took over the system in '76, they kept Hudson Bus Lines as the operator of the system. So it was just, every year, Hudson Bus Lines would submit the budget, the Transit Committee would secure the funds, and Hudson Bus Lines would operate the system. FTA came in and said, that's not how you can do business anymore, you have to go out to bid for an operator. Because the Transit Committee doesn't have its own employees, they needed to go out to bid and contract for services. So since '95, or maybe '96, the Transit Committee's been contracting, and that contractor has been Western Maine Transportation Services. Part of the contract and the funding is the funding breakdown. The interlocal agreement that was put together by the cities of Lewiston and Auburn said that the deficit funding, the subsidy required to fund the system was to be funded 50/50, 50% from Lewiston, 50% from Auburn. That's on the operating side and on the capital side, so any capital purchase. Should the committee be dissolved, capital assets that are left are to be dissolved 50/50 as well, once you take the federal share out, that is. Members on the Transit Committee are appointed by the city councils. So the City of Lewiston appoints three, the City of Auburn appoints three, and there's a seventh member that just swings between each community. And right now, that, I believe Auburn has that, I think, or maybe that position's vacant, I would have to check on that.
You want to mention the three members?
Yeah, the three, the members that are representing Auburn is City Manager Peter Creighton, Jody Durisco, the Assistant Administrator, Councilor Belinda Gary.
Executive Assistant is Jody.
Executive Assistant. And Auburn does have the swing member, that would be Chad Roberts. He's a rider and a resident of New Auburn. So he rides the bus to and from work every day, and actually, he takes the bus out to the meetings at AVCOG as well. The purpose of the Transit Committee and the interlocal agreement was to secure the funding necessary to provide public transit, to ensure the receipt of federal grants, and with those federal grants comes a lot of compliance. And also, is to maintain transit studies, to make sure that the system is operating where it should, when it should. As development occurs, routes change, whether it's housing development, or whether it's a commercial development or industrial. We try to make sure that the bus routes are going where the residents need to go, where the jobs are. LATC's roles and responsibilities, they are just a committee member, a committee that meets monthly. A lot of the staff responsibilities gets placed on, to my shoulders. That position has always been held by AVCOG. Since 1976, when the interlocal agreement was created, AVCOG, because of its role as a council of governments, provided the staffing assistance for the Transit Committee. It's just the structure of AVCOG and its function. So the Transit Coordinator deals with the compliance on behalf of LATC, provides assistance to LATC for the policy and procedures of running the system. These are all things that LATC is responsible for, setting the bus routes, the days and hours of operation, that's pretty much based on funding, purchasing buses, and marketing the system. So those things are functions of LATC, but it's the staff support that actually provides those functions for them, bringing them to the committee at meetings. LATC's structure, the administrative support, so as I mentioned, is provided by AVCOG, so there's financial support. All the books for LATC are run through Andrus Goggan Valley Council of Governments. Grants management has been provided through AVCOG, first through Maine Department of Transportation by applying for grants. Now, AVCOG is what is called a direct recipient of Federal Transit Administration funds. This occurred back in 2014. The governor sent letters to four, actually, five, they said, LATC and AVCOG, five transit operators that received FTA funds for the urban portion of federal funding, and was told that all those agencies would become direct recipients. Becoming a direct recipient, we no longer answer to DOT, we answer to FTA. And the compliance requirements increased, I can't even tell you how much they increased, like exponentially. There's so much more reporting, just everything that needs to be done. We get reviewed on every three years, and I looked at the current review book, and I believe it's 468 pages that you have to go through prior to your review. You have to answer the questions and get that submitted back to FTA. The Transit Committee contracts for its services, it's a pretty basic system. We try to keep it as simple as possible. The biggest contract is for operations and maintenance, and that is with Western Maine Transportation. They operate the system, and they maintain the system. So all the employees that are driving the buses and maintaining the buses are Western Maine employees. The next smaller contracts that LATC has is snow plowing and cleaning, so cleaning services for both bus stations. Talking fast. As a direct recipient, this slide shows you those compliance items that are in that 468-page document. Because AVCOG oversees LATC, some of those things AVCOG is responsible for, is getting the money in. Other things, LATC is directly responsible for, and they have to provide oversight over the contract as well, the contract that they have with Western Maine. So just, you know, legal, financial capacity, I mean, just the list. Some of these are more comprehensive than others, but there's still, there's still quite a bit to them. Just hours in operation of the bus system. The system currently operates six days a week, Monday through Friday. I'll call it a full level of service, 6:00 AM to 6:15. And then on Saturday, there's an abbreviated system that the routes run, there's seven routes during the week, did I get that right? Nine routes during the week, seven routes on the weekend. And those routes on the weekend run every two hours. A couple of the busier runs run hourly. So if you're going out on a weekend, you really need to plan your trip. Assets and technology that LATC has, LATC has two bus stations that they're maintaining, the one in Lewiston, and then the new one that opened up October 2016 in Auburn. Thirteen buses, about 10 bus shelters, bus stop signs, all the buses have onboard cameras. Buses are being equipped, and hopefully, within the next month, with automated stop announcers. So as the bus is approaching a particular stop, the GPS on the bus will announce the stop coming up. And those computer tablets that are being put on will also have computerized passenger counting. That's something that the contractor is doing through their own service that they have, where the Transit Committee was able to get a really good deal to just pretty much beta-test that type system for the contractor that they're using. Just a little on the current budget. This is actually 2018 budget. 51% of the revenues that support CityLink and LATC are coming from the Federal Transit Administration. Maine DOT puts in 5.8, City of Auburn 11.1, Lewiston puts in 14.4, Fairbox, we recover about 14.6, and then other, that's rent, interest, and advertising is 2.7. The local share funding, as I mentioned before, the interlocal agreement requires the cities of Lewiston and Auburn to split the deficit. In 2016, that was split 50/50 at 209,000. In FY 2017, that's when the City of Auburn reduced its funding to the Transit Committee. In FY 2017, that's when the city of Auburn reduced its funding to the Transit Committee. So that, it's, now it's a 56/44% split. And then that funding split was also carried forward into FY 2018. The impact that that had on the Transit Committee budget, it took a bus out of service. It was brought forward as being duplicating administrative overhead-type costs, when actually, it was the cost that that was providing, had to do with some of the compliance that AVCOG was now responsible for and LATC was responsible for. So the, it was, it was brought on saying that it was a budget cut due to administration, but what it did was it actually took a bus out of service. That bus was about 10 hours of service a day, and the impact was felt on the Auburn routes. And that was a decision the Transit Committee made. The Auburn routes have less frequent service now, the trips are longer, and there are longer wait times at the bus station. So people have, passengers have up to a 30-minute wait at the Auburn station to make a connection to get to Lewiston. I had a phone call from Spare Time Recreation, looking to get seniors over to bowl, and it took, planning-wise, if they were to take the bus, it would take an hour and a half to get from Bakarams in New Auburn to Spare Time. They would have to take three buses and transfer twice. Prior to 2017, it took roughly 39 minutes, and they needed, would only have to take two buses and transfer once. So an hour and a half for a senior citizen is, an hour and a half for anybody riding public transit is a pretty long trip. For a senior citizen, that trip is not going to happen to go bowling, I don't think. Ridership, you can also see on the next slide that ridership was, you felt the impact, or the Transit Committee felt the impact on ridership from 2016 to 2017 with the budget cut. You take a bus out of service, it's most likely that you're going to see ridership decrease as well. The route that saw the biggest hit was the New Auburn route, which saw a 55% decrease in service. The Mall Shuttle also saw a decrease in service. That bus used to run every 30 minutes, now it runs every 60 minutes, and that is a bus that actually comes over from Lewiston. Having one bus up in the mall area does create concerns when there are numerous people that are in wheelchairs now, using the bus system. Each bus only carries two wheelchairs, and if there's a third person waiting to get on that bus, the bus cannot carry that person. Thankfully, we have a good contractor, and they actually, they call out one of their other buses to come in to help. If you look at the slide on ridership, it should be the other way around with the numbers on the side, I couldn't get it to switch. So that last column, the pink, is 2017. So you can see the growth that we had from 2007 as we kept going. That tall one, over the 400,000, over that, that was an anomaly, and we think that that was pretty much attributed to high gas prices at that time. We saw ridership really increase that year. People that are riding CityLink, if you go and ride the bus, and I would be happy to give you all a pass to go and ride the bus, you would be surprised at everybody who's out there. I hear comments from people all the time, "You can't assume you know who's riding because everybody is riding the bus." It's actually, it's pretty refreshing to go out there and ride the bus, because you do see people going to work, you see senior citizens that are going out shopping, you see parents with their kids, and there are quite a few students riding the bus, whether they're going to college or high school. I've done presentations within the past six months, months, at both Lewiston High School and Edwardville High School, as they're trying to get some of their special needs students actually out there and getting them prepared for the workforce. And where these people are riding to? Everywhere. They're riding everywhere in the cities. And it was interesting listening to the Smart Growth presentation, because whether, you know, you take on that Smart Growth, I mean, public transit is environmental, social, and economic. It hits all of those. And the areas that were highlighted, there's a lot of things happening in New Auburn, and New Auburn service has been hurt the most. So just, that's just information on where the transit system is, how the budget impacts affected the Transit Committee, and just here to answer any questions you have. And, you know, if I can't give you the information now, we can provide it to you during the budget workshop.
City Manager Creighton, do you have anything to add to this?
Appreciate your time listening to this. This is important, I think. We talked about this at the LATC board meeting, and I felt that this is something that the council should, you know, have a chance to hear about and review before we get into the budget process.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that note, we're going to start off with Counselor Gary, but before that, just for the sake of time, only feel free to ask a question if you could, please, versus comments or opinions, excuse me, opinions. This is just fact-finding, so if there's any clarification that's needed, we'll stick to that, so we can make this go, and we can all have a bio break before the meeting. Counselor Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know it's going to come up if I mention anything during my counselor's report, where we are with the loan.
That's been paid back. The loan has been paid back.
Okay. The council wasn't updated about if it, if and when it was paid back?
No, it was, it was paid, I think the check was in the mail before the government actually shut down for their one day. We had everything, we had all the funds in, and we had the check in the mail, so, right, Jill?
No, I got it, I got it, I got it in my glove box, actually.
There we go.
So it's underneath the old McDonald's wrapper, but we got the.
Thank you.
Counselor Walker?
You tell me how you count your riders. How's the riders counted?
Riders are counted, a passenger trip is every time you board the bus.
Same passenger could ride it three different times in one day?
That is a passenger trip, yes, three passenger trips.
So if I'm going to New Auburn, cross the river, back to the mall, how many times do I get counted?
You would be, you would be counted twice. You'd be counted as a, as a transfer on the College Street bus when you get on in Lew, actually, it would be three. You'd be counted three times, the New Auburn bus, the Downtown Shuttle, and then the College Street.
And I know you've heard this a thousand times, New Auburn bus, and the people may have got hurt the most, but that bus does not carry very many people at certain times of the day.
You would probably, you would find that on pretty much any bus at certain times of day. Public, public transit runs continuously, because they, you never know when people are going out to ride. So there are, there are periods where you have peak hours, where, you know, this past week, if you were to go out on College Street, on Lisbon Street, those buses are full. Auburn Mall bus was probably full at times going up to the mall. But first thing in the morning, you have full buses, because people are going to work. So it's, it's, it's the way public transit works, that you, I mean, you can't assume that you're going to know when a person's out there riding, so you just go hourly, and people are able to make a decision on when they want to plan their trip.
The first buses that were caught slowed down, whatever way you want to put it, put at it, they were the morning buses for people to get to work early morning.
It was the, it was, cutting, cutting the hours impacted, I believe, the first hour of the day, trying to figure out how to make that work the most, the best. So there was, there was an impact that first hour. Auburn buses don't start running until 7:45.
Now, this year, last year, whatever period.
Right, right. October 1st, 2016.
Yeah.
Yep.
But I, I sit down there in many of them corners, and I watch the buses, and the early bus is normally the heaviest-traveled bus to get to whatever route they're going. So I, I would have looked at it like you cut the bus, that's probably 11 to 12, and then you have your dinner hour, and you start it back up at 1:00. It may have affected somebody at noon time, but it would have been better to have to wait after work than not to be able to get to work, in my opinion. And, you know, if you don't make it to work, you get fired. If you have to stay there and wait that extra hour after you've eaten dinner, you probably will fall asleep wherever you're sitting for an hour, so. I, I, I think in some choices, whoever made that decision could have thought it out better, instead of looking at a way of punishing a city that didn't give you that extra few thousand dollars that you thought you should have had.
That, that was a decision made by the Lewiston Transit Committee.
Still all fell under your roof somehow.
Counselor Fournier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Question?
I'm intrigued with high school students riding the bus. Can you tell me a little more about how many do you think are using the bus?
I, I don't have actual numbers on the number of high school students that are riding. It's more of an opportunity for, the teachers are putting together programs to help ready students to go out into the workforce, because they're helping them find jobs, and they're basically teaching the children, the children, the young adults, how to ride public transit, so they're going to be able to get these jobs on their own. There was also another program that the Auburn Police Department was running as well, and they were buying bus passes at a reduced rate that they were giving to, providing to kids that were at risk, that were looking for a job. They would get the bus passes for these students to help them get to and from their jobs during the summer and during the school year. I think that program might have lost its funding for the bus passes. I haven't heard from them recently.
And then, two more questions, one real quick. I know Counselor Walker's concern about people getting to work is, is something that's really important, and, and knowing that, you know, if you had your crystal ball, you know, and you were to improve something, where would you make an improvement? What would be a priority for you?
The, the system always has, if we were to survey passengers right now, passengers would look at longer hours of service. If, if the city of Auburn were to go back and, I'll say, fully fund the service, so it's matching the city of Lewiston's, it would be to put the system back to the way it was operating back in 2016. Even with that being said, there were still holes in the system at that time, as far as making it very convenient for people. You still had times, sometimes, where you had to wait, and it doesn't run late enough for many people as well, you know, to get. Counselor Walker mentioned people getting to work. There's, there's hours that are all over the board, when you're talking retail and the service sector. So not everybody starts work at 7:00, and not everybody gets out, you know, at 4:00 or 5:00. You have people that start at 9:00 and work later than that. So it's extend hours of service, most likely.
And there's another tie-in, that would be great, because there's a tie-in to Smart Growth. Thank you very much for your detailed report, that kind of helps us analyze.
Counselor Titus?
Hi, thank you. Thank you for coming. I just want to ask one question, and maybe this is more for the city manager, because I was involved in the original time when we cut this funding, and the reason we did it was because we didn't feel 50/50 was fair. It may have been fair in 1976, but it certainly isn't fair in 2016 or 17. So I think we had made a suggestion before to look into the interlocal agreement, because I think the answer was to fully fund you, but 60/40, and then you'd get all the federal funding, and everything would be fine. Of course, that didn't happen. Instead of finding an answer to that problem, we just cut. So we've been two years, we're still cutting. I'd like to be able to see us find a way to change the interlocal agreement and make it fair for everybody, and that way, everybody has the funding they need, nothing changes than it was in 2016, except it's fairer.
Can I just comment? The, if you look at the hours of service that are provided, the hours of service are pretty much following those funding lines right now, at 56/44.
And I think, at this point, I don't think, at this point, we want to go too deep into that, but I will say, what we're talking about not is necessarily cutting services in a pro-rata fashion, but versus aligning based upon either a population or usership ratio overall funding schematic.
That's all, yeah, I mean, that's.
So it's not about, you know, if we pay 40, we only get, you know, 40% of service. Counselor Hayes?
Yeah, my first question has always been answered, because I appreciate going back and the timeline and the history, and I look forward to other agencies doing the same thing that'll come before us. I guess the only real question I have is, there was a transit study to look at ridership and so forth, when there was some rerouting done and so forth. How long ago was that done?
Time goes by. The last transit study, was this 2018, I believe it was 2013 or 2014, and to, by the time that study was finished and the budget was happening, actually, it was 2000, it was close to when the city council reduced the funding to the Transit Committee, so any of the recommendations that came through on that study, the Transit Committee had, they weren't able to implement any of them, because they were dealing with the reduced funding. So, and to be honest with you, the study probably wasn't one of the better studies that the Transit Committee has had done. It was lacking.
Okay, you. Counselor Zonia?
Thank you very much. This is, this is extremely helpful. When you take a bus out of service, what happens to the bus?
It's just put into the spare. So it's a, it's a spare bus to help the fleet. If there's maintenance, if there's planned maintenance going on, then that bus gets put back into service.
The other thing is, in terms of, and I know that the funding has been cut for you, but in terms of information about bus routes and bus stop, you know, covers and things like that, is that ever part of the discussion? Because I just find, for me, riding the bus, sometimes it's confusing for me about sort of what routes went, and if the weather is bad.
We, the, the Transit Committee relies, and I'll say, staff relies on, because I work with Wester Main Transportation very closely to make sure we get the word out, and it's through social media. So I go out and do presentations to organizations, and we are always trying to get people to sign up for LATC's Twitter feed. That's the best way that we can get information out. If a bus is running late, if a bus is missing a trip, for whatever reason, by posting it on Twitter, it gets out to people immediately. I always find that, no matter what you do, you're not going to be able to hit everybody. Not everybody has a smartphone. People don't read the newspaper. People don't read the posters that you put up. So it's, it's constant, it's ongoing. For cancellation of services, Wester Main will call into the news stations as well. If anything gets posted on Twitter, it automatically gets posted on LATC's website as well. So those are the means that we use for notices like that.
And nothing in plans for bus shelters?
There are bus shelters that are up, and the Transit Committee does have bus shelters that they can actually relocate, and I actually, a year and a half ago, held a couple of public meetings to determine, asked riders to let us know where to install bus shelters, and we didn't get any feedback. The problem with putting a bus shelter in, you have to make sure that it's ADA accessible, so you can't just put a bus shelter anywhere. And then also, in the winter, it's expected that that shelter's going to be maintained. So you have to find somebody to go out and to shovel the bus shelters.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Young.
And in general terms, what's the length, width, distance that you service?
In Auburn, the Minded Avenue bus goes out, Minded Avenue to McDonald's, out to Hotel Road. So I would say that's the service area of that direction. I don't know exact miles. Out to Central Main Community College, and then in New Auburn, it goes out to Cook Street. So that's pretty much the service area. And you have to keep in mind, when the Transit Committee is providing fixed route transit, they're also providing ADA complimentary para-transit service, which that's a service for people with disabilities. That service area expands out three-quarters of a mile beyond a fixed route. So the fixed, the ADA service provides service to people that live three-quarters of a mile beyond Hotel Road. So there's this amoeba around all the routes. So if, you know, looking at the Minded Avenue ridership on that chart, it's been growing each year, but if the committee had, had looked at reducing, eliminating that service, then they would also be eliminating a huge area of service for people with disabilities. So it was a pro and con that they had to weigh on that. Lewiston, the service area expands out, out Main Street, out Sabados, out Lisbon Street, significantly.
Excuse me, I appreciate you teaching students, high school students, the skill of reading a bus schedule.
I'm trying.
Because I've been, I've never rode, rode the bus here in Lewiston or Auburn, but I've written, read, I've been a rider in other communities, and I find them. I've written, uh, read, I've been a rider in other communities, and I find them at times very confusing. Say, this bus doesn't go there. Well, which bus does? Well, look for an orange, a purple, a yellow, or a Pepsi-Cola bus.
I would be glad to go out on a bus ride with any of you.
Uh, well, thank you very much, and thank you very much for both of you for your time today. At this point, we're going to end the workshop, so I definitely appreciate it, and this is a good prep for, uh, our future meetings in the budget season. We're going to stand and recess. The workshop's over. I'm going to restart the council, uh, the actual regular session of the council meeting at 7:05 to give everybody a five-minute pause for water, et cetera. Okay? We stand adjourned. Call the order of the meeting of January, excuse me, Janu- February, hold on. February, what's the date today? February 5th? Call the meeting of February 5th, 2018, order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At least I knew it was 2018. Sorry, folks, for the delay. I like being punctual, but the workshops were very informative, so hence we did need a couple-minute break before we called this session to order. First on the agenda is consent items. There's one consent item on the agenda. Can I have a, I will entertain a motion for this at this time?
Motion to accept. Second?
I have a motion from Counselor Walker. I have a second from Counselor Fornier. Vote by a show of hands, all those in favor. All those opposed, abstained, none being, this motion carries by a vote of seven to zero. Next on the agenda is the minutes for the January 22nd, 2018, regular council meeting. Are there any corrections to the minutes as they have been printed? None being? I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the January 22nd, 2019, regular city council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I move, I move that we accept the minutes of January 22nd.
Second?
I have a motion by Counselor Fornier and a second by Counselor Walker by a show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? None being? The minutes are accepted by a vote of seven to zero. I'm going to skip, we don't have any communications, presentations, or recognitions at this time, so we're going to move on to the open session. Members of the public are invited to speak about issues that are not on today's, um, agenda. I'd ask that you state your name and address, and please leave me your comments to about three, five minutes, though. I can't say that too much because we've been kind of going over ourselves, so.
That's okay, I'm aiming on it. I come prepared to be short. Okay, Renee Simonitis, uh, Nine Oak Street, Auburn, Maine, Ward 3. And let me tell you, Counselor Titus, you're continually starting to endear yourself to me. I'm very thankful. So anyway, there's that, and we'll move on. Okay, so in looking over smart growth before, you know, being somewhat prepared for this meeting, somewhat, I mean, gosh, I'm a mom, homeschooling mom of three kids, I can't even tell you how much I don't want to be here talking to you people. I really don't. I want to trust that our government is just going to do what the small government would do and not have to be here writing you guys about every little stupid thing that you're doing. So, um, so there's that. I don't want to be here. Ha ha! And I almost didn't come because I, I feel like, um, we're, we're in a place where, um, there's nothing that I'm going to say that's going to impact anything that goes on here. So I come and speak with the idea that you guys are going to do what you're going to do. You're probably not going to listen to a darn word that I say. I'm going to sound crazier the more often I come here, and it's okay. You guys just tune out, because really what I'm doing is putting it on public record that there is objection to some of the things that are going on, so that in the future, when everything goes to crap and everybody looks back, they'll be able to say, oh, somebody did object. So I'm here objecting, which is why I hauled my cute little donkey out the door tonight. Ten Principles of Smart Growth, reading down through the list, um, and just be the mantra for any time I come to speak to you people. Not your job, number one. Not your job, number two. Not your job. Number three, create a range of housing opportunities and choices. Not your job. Create walkable neighborhoods. Not your job. And let me just sit there for a minute, because that stupid sidewalk you people put in on the Hampshire Street on the upper juts out into the road, has bottleneck traffic, is a pain in the butt, and I had to go way out into the road tonight to get here, and there was somebody not walking on the cleared-off sidewalk. And I'm already out into the road. It was a huge, and nobody came to our neighborhood asking if we wanted new sidewalks, and people used to walk all the time, and they still will, but people walked in that neighborhood all the time, and walked down to the little Gowles Market and over to the library, and nobody's scared of crossing the streets. We all already walked, and in the process of building those sidewalks, tore down, ripped down, I mean, I laughed when I got to preserve open space, farmland, natural beauty, and critical environment areas. I understand that that's talking about big areas, but you tore down the trees that lined that street. There was a gorgeous, gorgeous tree in front of the Webster Street Building, and it's gone. I almost cried, and I was hopping mad the day that I watched them cut that tree down. It was a big twisty tree that ran around like this, and you cut it down to build sidewalks that jut out into the road, make driving a pain in the donkey, and to do, to put sidewalks in a place where people were already walking freely. That neighborhood, people are always walking around. So anyway, there's that little cranky bit. Foster distinctive, attractive communities with strong sense of place. Really not your job. Preserve open space, farmland, natural beauty, and critical environment areas. Not your job. Strengthen indirect development toward existing communities. Not your job. Provide a variety of transportation choices. Not really your job. Make development decisions predictable, fair, and cost-effective. Not your job to develop. And encourage community and stakeholder collaboration. Ha ha! I'm just going to laugh at that. Okay, what is smart growth? I loved, I loved that you said, we had this, uh, at the turn of the century, 1800. I love that you said that, because it's the main point for why I would have any objection to this, and that is, at the turn of the century, we did have this, but at the time, the governing, any government, national, state, or local, did not have the mindset that this totalitarian holistic view of controlling and developing the life, every aspect of life, was not in the mindset of the purview of the governments at the time. These are not your jobs. Social nurturing community, not your job to nurture our community. Sufficient economy, stay out of the economy. Listening to the transit thing, it's all the problems with the transit. We've got to put up a transit station, then we've got to make sure that somebody pays for it. If that were a private entity, they would have to pay for somebody to come, keep up their stations, because otherwise, people would boycott and demand a better product from somebody else. Not your job. Not your job. Economic economy and the environment, and this is the point that I'm going to say. Ten years ago, when Glenn Beck came out and exposed the UN's Agenda 21, he was laughed off the stage and gaslighted for being a conspiracy theorist, and yet, here we are, sitting here today with the recommendation that you guys bind yourself to creating Agenda 21 space in, in Auburn, Maine. Stacking everybody into the middle of the city and making sure that the community, the land outside of the city is sustainable, that is Agenda 21. This is coming down from on top, and it doesn't matter that it came from whatever organization brought it. This is an agenda that was put into place over two decades ago, and I know I sound like I'm wearing tinfoil, that's okay. Postarity will see that I objected and, and that I had some sense to it. I'm okay, and you can call me crazy. I'm good with that. That this is Agenda 21, stacking us all into the, what is it? The create a range of housing opportunities and choices and using, taking advantage of compact building. Yeah, and joint stack and pack, stick us all in the middle, make sure that we don't have our cars because, and make sure that the land outside of the city is sustainable because, oh no, the sky is falling, and man-made climate change is, um, causing us all to have to take control of every aspect of everybody's life. So, thank you for your time. I hope it didn't go over to five, you know, three to five minutes, but any time that you can see me coming, just, just prepare yourselves that it's basically me coming to say, not your job. Thank you.
Simonitis?
Yes.
Simonitis, is that the correct?
Simonitis.
Simonitis, very good. Thank you very much for your time. Is there anybody else from the community that wants, would like to speak to us tonight about something that's not on the council agenda? None being? I'll now close open session. We'll move on to unfinished business, which there is none. Looks like we finished all the business. New business, ordinance 01 dash 02-05-2018, amending the City of Auburn zoning ordinance for the property located at 186 Main Street, uh, from traditional downtown neighborhood to downtown traditional center. This is the first reading, and if you remember, we did have a workshop on this at the previous, workshop item. This is also under tab one of your notebooks. I will entertain a motion. Do I have a motion?
I move, we, Mr. Mayor, I move we accept, uh, ordinance 01 dash 02-05-2018, and that is to amend the City of Auburn zoning ordinance for the property located at 186 Main Street, uh, from, uh, traditional downtown neighborhood to downtown traditional centers as a first reading.
Second?
I have, I have a motion from Counselor Fornier and a second from Counselor Walker. I'd like to open this up for pub, uh, to the public for comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this issue? Seeing none, I'm going to bring back to the council. Is there any debate? Open up, we're not going to go in order right now.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Counselor Titus?
I think it was brought up during the workshop, and I don't recall if we got an answer. Maybe Eric can answer it, because we're selecting a particular parcel here, um, but the question was how that fit with other parcels, and if it was making this parcel more saleable or more buildable, why weren't we looking at other parcels at the same time? Or are we going to do this one parcel at a time?
Thank you, Counselor Titus. This in, um, I wouldn't recommend doing one parcel at a time, zone changes generally. This particular change, um, happens at an area along Main Street where there is a transition from the more urban-style design that we see on Main Street right behind us to more of a two-and-a-half-story, more residential, uh, type of a neighborhood. I think you really have the option in that stretch of exactly where that, that transition occurs. This is moving it one lot to the north to allow a little bit more intensive development to extend, uh, one lot to the north. I think if you continue down that street, um, you know, two, three more lots, you really start to, um, encourage a scale of buildings that's inconsistent with what exists there now.
Thank, and thank you for that. And also, counselors in your packet, too, there is, um, maps that talk about the before and after of this zoning change. Is there any other comment? We did discuss this in the last workshop. Is there any other comment from the council? None being? Um, I will say, though, as in passing, um, just to kind of reiterate what I think was common consensus during the workshop on this topic, this zoning change allows this property to be developed, um, with more flexible, correct me, you're the expert on this, Mr. Cousins, a more flexible process. In other words, the, um, was it T5 dash 1 form code?
It's, uh, less restrictive setbacks, um, more stories, uh, higher intensity kind of development.
So allows for a private commercially developed, or someone with, that wants to develop this for commercial process to do so. this for commercial process, to do so within a greater range of possibility?
Greater flexibility.
Greater flexibility. Okay, very good. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we're all in the same sheet of music on that one. If there's no other debate from the council, I'm going to ask the clerk to conduct a roll call vote.
Counselor Titus?
Yes.
Counselor Fornier?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Gary?
Yes.
Counselor Young?
Yes.
Counselor Lasagna?
Yes.
Counselor Hayes?
Looks like the motion carries seven zero. Next on the agenda is an order authorized by the City Manager and Human Resource Director to include domestic partner coverage as part of the Maine Municipal Employee Health Trust Con- Contract for Health Insurance. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion from Counselor, I have a motion from Counselor Titus and a second for Counselor Walker. I'm going to open this up to the public for comment. Is there any comment from the public on this order? None being, I'm going to bring it back to the council. I'm going to start off, uh, we, we worked shop this just, uh, about a month and a half ago, okay? Uh, this is something that City Manager Creighton brought forth to us, uh, to consider. So I'm going to kind of open it up just for some comment and debate, and, uh, let's start off with Counselor Gary at this time.
No comment.
Counselor Walker?
No comment.
Counselor Fornier?
Um, I just heard from one of my constituents indicating that, uh, that constituent didn't have any problem with allowing the coverage, but was concerned if we were to pay for, you know, many of these because it would end up, you know, costing more and more. So I'm just stating what that individual had to say.
Counselor Titus?
Yeah, I, uh, I'm in favor of this because I happen to believe that a couple is a couple, and what they choose to do is their business as long as it falls within guidelines. Uh, but one question I had, I did want to make note that it mentioned it again in the packet this time, that our, uh, staff, they budget for a percentage of all people that could possibly take the family plan, whether they do or they don't, and that I gotta believe there's quite a lot of surplus at the end of the year that just goes to the general fund and gets redistributed for the following year. And with that in mind, I was thinking that maybe we could get a little closer to a better projection and lower that budget that would still include this group and actually lower the projected budget by just lowering the very high estimate of what it could be. That way, this would not have any effect on the budget. In fact, it would lower the budget because we'd have a lower number that we're going into in this fiscal year because we've, instead of budgeting for 75% possibility of everybody taking the family plan, we go with a 60% or 50% or whatever would be a little more realistic. That would be my suggestion because I think you're right as far as it costing us more. However, a family is a family. We already budget for a certain high percentage of who could take the family plan now. That, it's built into a budget. Now, of course, when there's a surplus, it goes back into the general fund and we rebudget again. So I'm not saying we're spending the money. I'm just saying maybe we could, your constituents worry would go away knowing that it had no effect on the budget realistically. Just my thought. And I would love the City Manager to comment on that too. But anyway, not my turn.
Mr. Creighton, can you please?
I'm, I'm happy to do that. Um, a couple of comments, uh, in response. One, uh, because of the way we do budget, um, on the health insurance, there is no impact as a result of, uh, approval of the domestic partner coverage. Secondly, um, I think a good time to, uh, address that issue that you just raised, Counselors, during the budget process.
Very good. Thank you. Counselor Hayes?
I am supporter of this, and I guess, uh, recognizing that right now, within City Hall, there's some inconsistency between municipal department and school department. I think now we'll put both departments the same.
Counselor Lasagna?
Um, I, I agree with Counselor Hayes that I think it's important that both departments are offering the same opportunity, that this is really to draw people in and good employees. I do want to note that, um, I have information from a constituent, and she asked me to say that she supports coverage for family regardless of its makeup, but we cannot continue to pay for family coverage. She'd like us to pay 100% of the employee, him or herself, but family coverage or anything above the individual cost should be to the employee. So I, she wanted me to get that on the record. Um, I don't believe that's the way that we should be doing it, but I wanted to make sure that that was out there. But I'm in favor of this.
Counselor Young?
We were going to get a definition of what domestic partner would be, and I have, I, I don't know. I didn't see that.
I, um, just, we didn't, I don't believe that was provided by the city, though I did take the, you can actually Google search, and the state of Maine has requirements for domestic partnership, and the threshold or litmus test, I believe they used, um, in order to meet this. But we can pull this up, or City Manager Creighton, if you have it handy.
It's in the background.
It is in the background. It's in the memo, but maybe not as specifically as Counselor Young would like. I'm going to ask Chris Mumma, the Human Resources Director, to come forward and, and address this question. Chris?
Good evening. Uh, there are some criteria, um, when it comes to domestic partner coverage, um, so that, um, you avoid that revolving door type of thing. So, um, they have to be in a relationship for at least a year with some type of joint financial venture, which could be, um, that has been established. So like bank accounts or purchasing of a home, uh, purchasing a property, things like that. In addition to that, they cannot, um, be, um, you know, married and then divorced within that year. Um, so it has to be in a relationship within a complete year. Um, so there are, you know, certain guidelines that the state establishes as well as, um, the health insurance as well. So it's not, it's not, um, like I said, a revolving door where every time somebody gets a new partner, they're, they're adding them to the health insurance.
See, I have a few problems with it. I guess I'm the only dissenter in the group, but since you can marry anybody you want, whether it's the same sex, opposite sex, or whatever, um, I don't know that personally I can see granting this privilege to somebody, so I guess I'll vote against it.
If there's nothing else from the council, I'll give my, my comment on this. Thank you very much. Appreciate your, your concept. Next time, I'll read the background. Great detail there. Um, a couple of points, just to summarize, I, I think Counselor Hayes, um, your point about consistency between the Auburn School Department and the City of Auburn as a municipality is something that this, um, that is obviously needs to be, I think, addressed or at least talked about, and, uh, I'm curious to see all the other discrepancies that might exist between, you know, city organizations, if you would. So I think that's a very good point. And Counselor Lasagna, uh, your point about, uh, participation in healthcare reimbursement or compensation, um, for spouses or domestic partners probably needs to be taken into consideration and discussed further as the budget season nears. So I'm going to make sure we have noted that and that those two facts are brought up. If there's no other debate, I am going to bring this to a vote. No other debate? Okay. Um, now, for the vote by show of hands, all those in favor? All those opposed? The order carries six to one. Moving on to reports. Mayor's report, first and foremost. Down to some serious business here. Counselor Walker, considering I won the Winterfest Challenge, I am still waiting on your invite for dinner that, uh, yeah, and something with seafood. So, don't wait, don't make me wait too long.
I think McDonald's will be fine.
They got a lobster roll. Okay, so we're good. That might, that might work. But there's no McDonald's in New Auburn, so, uh, you know, that's a little out of your territory. Um, other than that, it's been a fairly quiet week with regards to the city. Recovery from Winterfest, yes. I'd like to make a couple of notes, though. I was gifted, we were gifted in the mayor's office, a loan, I don't know if you can gift a loan, of some very nice memorabilia from Auburn's past, so from 1869 on to about 50 years ago. I'd like to invite all of you and the public after this meeting to go through the office before they're mounted, if you'd like, and look at some of these pictures of our, of our past, and join me in, in really starting to celebrate our past and honoring, or if you're, excuse me, honoring our past while we celebrate our future. Take a peek at those. They're pretty, they're pretty eye-opening. So I would like to thank the Andes Coggin Historical Society for loaning those to the city, uh, so I'd like to encourage all of you to go to the Andes Coggin Historical Society and see what they have to offer during their operating hours, and you can find them online. So, other than that, there is nothing that I'll have on my agenda that needs to be addressed right now. So, or reports. We'll start off off to the right with Counselor Young, reports.
Yes, we had our, um, Great Falls Advisory Committee meeting. We went over, uh, discovered we have one opening for Auburn to be on the board, so get your applications in. Uh, we also discussed the possibility of, um, going down one staff member, down to one, one member, and the, the other half would be, goes to, um, what's Brian working? IT? Yes. IT, so, um, the reason for that is that, um, a lot of the programming that comes in for people that want to have their shows, it's really, since we lost our studio and, and we have space up at the high school, that really hasn't taken off much, and, um, they seem to think because people are going to YouTube and various different Facebooks that people don't want their shows on, uh, uh, public access TV anymore. I don't think that's the case, uh, because I think there's still people out there, um, that have video that probably is still stuck in their cameras and haven't even put it on YouTube, and, um, I would suggest they get in touch with our Great Falls TV staff and, um, and the possibility of having their own show, and they'll, they won't do the show for you, uh, but if you've got an idea, a cooking show or whatever, if you're a nonprofit, uh, come see us here, uh, during office hours and talk to Brian or Phil, and they will, uh, listen to you and see what you're planning, see what might work. Councilman Walker was a guest, and he contributed some. He might want to add some to, uh, this report because he was also in attendance. And that's all I have to report at this point.
Counselor Walker, do you want to add anything?
Well, I, I think the, uh, Great Falls TV somehow could be advertised more so that more people know exactly what we use it for and what people could do with the Great Falls TV. I, I would like to see the mayor have a, a portion there once in a while, and, and it would be nice if the manager had a, had a show once in a while. I can remember with Chip Morrison, he had a show, I think, every month that was on there, different people coming in to speak with him. We could have the assistant manager be willing to speak once in a while so the manager's not stuck there every month, and we could even go to the department heads that want to do it, not have to do it, but want to do it, and, and we can invite other groups, Water District, uh, MWAC, any, anybody. It just would use it more and make it more, you know, open to the people so they'd understand it's something that we all, I mean, I used it many, many times by bringing people together when we were kind of bickering over if we should merge or not merge. So I, I think it got out to a lot of people, and it's really healthy for people to have these things going on. So across the river could do, could use it as much. I mean, we wouldn't be there more than two times each a year if we did that.
Thank you very much for that, and I, I will make it a, a point to start, uh, promoting this and actually reach out to them to do some shows and maybe a, a Broadway skit or something with the City Manager myself might be appropriate. Um, something with music.
Musical.
I will say, uh, one recommendation, and maybe you can connect with the school department on this, has come to my attention that the school department has a fairly advanced, um, and growing, uh, media department, communication department, in some partnership with NESCOM, New England School of Communication from Bangor, and they're doing TV productions and so forth in the school. There might be some sort of partnership and collaboration. I wasn't aware they were doing such a thing, so I throw that out there. Maybe you can talk to Counselor Fornier about that or the school department directly.
Thank you.
Counselor Lasagna?
I'll also say that you might want to talk to Auburn Public Library. They have a really robust teen, uh, media program that they do after school. Um, so I attended, along with many of the other counselors, um, the public meeting to talk about the ag zone. Um, it was very well attended. Um, they're looking at sort of how are we changing from a resource farming-based economy to something that maintains that farming but makes it part of a larger system so that a farm isn't a standalone. It's what I took from it, it's farming needs to be a part of the system that it value-added, that is, um, gets them connected to places to be able to sell their, uh, the things that they're growing and making. Um, it was interesting to hear about how much land we actually have in Auburn that was once farmed, and to hear that it is not farmed now, we could, not because the land has been bought, but because it's just expensive to bring it back from, it's been allowed to, uh, become forest. So on February 1st at this meeting, they gave us a lot of data, and I have to say that the, um, group that did the presentation, um, did a great job. I think that they, uh, the city did a great job in hiring these consultants to, to look at this Crossroads Resource Center. So they gave us a lot of data. There were a lot of questions involved. I think the, uh, group itself is a good mix of people in the community, people who live in the ag zone and farmers, and on February 15th, it's going to be very important, I think, Mayor, I said February 16th to you, but it's Thursday the 15th, is going to be the next meeting at six o'clock in the chambers here, um, to talk about potential solutions, trends, and recommendations. So this will be a chance to hear what the consultants are saying in terms of recommending how we can move forward in updating how we see our, um, the ag zone, uh, in this community. So I hope a lot of people will, will be there.
Thank you, and I was in attendance too. That's very informative. There's a lot of information here that crosses, um, ag and really just general demographic studies, I think is very valuable. Counselor Hayes?
Yeah, we did have our airport monthly meeting. At that, we welcomed Dick Lachapelle as a Lewiston representative to the board. We did approve the FY 18, 19 operation budget, which is being submitted, uh, to both cities. Uh, that would be coming before us. Uh, we did form a committee to select a consulting engineering company, which, uh, we have one under contract now, but under FAA, we need to redo that every five years, uh, so we're doing that. We did take the opportunity, particularly that committee, to actually go to, uh, Backwoods Barbecue and Grill, which is the airport cafeteria. And actually, it is the same, uh, Backwoods Barbecue that's on Center Street during the summer. So it was the first time I had, uh, partaken of their offering, and I was very impressed. So if you're looking for, uh, a unique setting, uh, I would recommend going by the airport. It, it struck me funny too, talking to the, the chef, he was saying that normally they have better crowds on inclement weather days than, you know, good weather days, which struck me funny because I would think if you're going to go there, it'd be good to see the planes coming and going in inclement weather, probably not. I did look forward to maybe, uh, the railroad company, and I did kind of prepare myself a little bit because there is quite a history that was prepared, uh, was actually published in 2009 with respect to the Lewiston Airport, or Lewiston Auburn Railroad Company, uh, but actually because of the, uh, we have three members from Auburn, but they are rotating, uh, three-year, uh, terms. So, uh, actually, Mr. Trafton has just been reappointed, uh, so I will wait maybe next year.
Yeah, there's, uh, there's a lot going on in the railroad corporation. Um, yeah, and it's an interesting inter, I will say, thank you for that and your patience on that. Um, that is by Professor Doug Hodgkins. It's a fascinating book, uh, the history of the Lewiston Auburn Railroad Corporation. It was insightful to read. It's an act of the legislature. There's a lot of, a lot of issues that are going on with that. Interesting dynamic.
We do have, uh, AVCOG, a couple of meetings coming up, one in, uh, this month, actually, the 28th, and then one in, in April. Uh, I guess, uh, two other things. One, uh, Leroy, I think that, I understand you provide or prepare a nice dish of bacon I understand you provide or prepare a nice dish of baked beans that you might offer to our mayor as, I'll let that stand. I guess the other...
I will take them. Just don't tell my wife.
The other question I have, I guess, prior to getting into actually looking at budgets, I guess, a question, are we going to maybe have a time that we could get together as a group? Because I think, you know, coming forward, I'm sure previous members had goals and objectives, but I guess we really haven't had an opportunity to actually review what might be standing, and maybe to provide those to we as the new members, but then maybe having us, giving us an opportunity to review those and...
Yeah, very good for that. And we'll be, I'll just be speaking with City Manager Creighton about that, but point well taken. Thank you very much, Counselor Hayes. Counselor Titus?
I'll reiterate that, as far as any, you know, workshops or discussion relating to the budget as soon as possible. It's really, really good. I don't have a whole lot to say, except I do want to reiterate what Counselor Lozonia said about the, the ag meeting I also attended. And I was a little bit disappointed that most of the data was Andes Coggin County only and not Auburn, because I think that 60,000 or so acres of land, farmland in the county, and we have a fair piece of it, but only 22,000 acres, tells me that, I don't know if we can use that as a guide when it comes to these, this data. It's going to be hard for us to do the same thing as Wales or Sabates or Turner or somebody else, because I think we have different objectives. But I think it's going to be good information to use going into the next step, and I thought it was a, it was a good presentation. Aside from that, we have two Neighborhood Watch meetings coming up. They're actually both on the same night tomorrow, Western Avenue. Officer Bouchard will be there at, on Western Avenue at the Dance Center. And then also, Sunderland Drive is having their meeting on the same night, but at Sam's on Court Street.
Sorry, can you give us the times on those meetings?
Six o'clock. Both of them, six o'clock. The Western Main, Western Avenue is right there at the Dance Center on Western Avenue. It's kind of a dance, a dance center.
School, the old school of dance.
Yeah. And Sunderland Drive is being held at Sam's. It always is at 6:00. At the one at Sunderland Drive, they are going to have, because that's, that's Officer Hatfield, and they're going to do some information. They're going to bring some, some of the children with them and talk about, they're invited to come and meet with the, ask the Officer Hatfield some general questions about stranger danger and anything else they are curious about. So, they're going to have a kind of a kids' night out at this meeting, so it'll give the kids a chance to talk to the officer. And then going forward, they're going to be talking about other things that both neighborhoods need for safety. It's been a big issue with the speeders. I think everybody's got that issue, but Western Avenue and Sunderland, I mean, and Stevens Mills Hotel Road, that whole, those three major areas. And they're working towards it, but they're looking for ideas. And so, they'll be working and brainstorming those.
Great, thank you. Counselor Fornier?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have four reports, real quick. I attended the 7:30 in the morning, wee hours of the morning, but it's nice to have them at morning for a change, library Board of Trustees meeting. And half an hour after the corporators meeting took place, it's an annual meeting, and the Board of Trustees has a set of people called corporators, and they meet once a year. So, they were discussing, you know, trying to refine that, so it made more sense, you know, trying to look at the boards, the directors, and see if they can incorporate both of those together, because it didn't seem to make sense to have corporators come just once a year. And, and, you know, what kind of impact do you have when you have, you know, a meeting for those individuals once a year? So, we had the discussion on that, and they, the corporates, corporators accepted the bylaws. I also attended another library meeting shortly after that in Lewiston, and I was very pleasantly surprised to see new Mayor Bouchard there. He's a member of the Library Board of Trustees, and he really seems to love that, you know. He really gets into it, and he seems to be very child-oriented. So, that was really great to see. And I got to meet Marcella, who is the, the head librarian. She and Mamie work very, very well together. And the topic that night was the budget and for Lewiston, and they, they welcome us to come back and forth at any time. It was intriguing. I was intrigued by their tenacity in terms of, you know, cataloging every single activity that takes place at the library, so that, so that the point is that they're going to get clickers. So, there any time something happens, they're going to click it, and so that way, they'll know how many. I'm going like, that's pretty accurate. So, I'm intrigued about what a little turnout like. A third thing I did was, there were no, there was not a school committee meeting yet. It's going to be this, this Wednesday. So, I'll report on that at the following meeting. And finally, last but not least, I attended the Susquehannet Centennial Meeting chaired by former Mayor LaBonte, and he indicated that, this was Wednesday, the 31st, this will happen every last Wednesday of the month, so that he invites anyone who wishes to go to attend. He has, you know, started with an agenda, and he's asking for people to contact him if you have any ideas, if you wish to participate, if you wish to see his list of contacts that will be involved. And we've found some that we added in. So, I mean, any information is really, really important. So, basically, that's what I attended.
Thank you. Counselor Walker?
Thank you. The, the ag study that we're actually doing here in the city, I'm glad in many ways that we've decided to fund this and do it. Fifty-four years are approximately, it's been, since anyone even has looked at this, and there has been many arguments over it because of the 50% rule and the 10-acre rule. So, we'll have to wait and see how this whole thing's going to wash out. But I'm glad, and I hope it doesn't take 54 years to do it again, because it should be something looked at every 20 years for sure, if we're going to put this in a package and make it work for the community that we live in. The other thing, I'd like to jump to Sherwood Heights for a minute. We had over 350 people that visited us that day. Sixty of them went snowshoeing with the principal of Sherwood Heights School. Two hundred and something of them slid up and down the hill at Sherwood Heights School, and that trail was some fast to go down, trust me. A heck of a lot slower coming up, though, especially if you are my size and my age. But we, we had a great time, and we had a lot of people skating rink that was built by Joe Gray and myself. We put in about 48 hours of time to build that rink, and we had over 100 people skating on that, that day. So, for one little area, put on by a little association, like the United New Auburn Association, pulled out one heck of a lot of great entertainment. And myself and my group and anyone that came there, which were policemen, firemen, and people that are part of the city, enjoyed that day. And I was some proud myself to see such a great community event go off without a cost of one penny involved in this. So, just so, let the city know itself, and then the people out there, we can do this in all the communities around us if we really want to. And it doesn't take a lot of money to pull this off. It would have been nice if we had a small budget, and that budget could have been as little as $200, and it would have had, it would have added more to it. I won't go into details, because there's no reason to. We'll, we'll just make it better next year, and we will work on a little budget put together. The other thing, there was a young man that put a letter to the editor together and had it in the newspaper, that said he would love to see Sherwood Heights have a skating rink every year from now on for the community. And this is a public rink. This isn't a hockey rink. I think that's a great thing that we've got a young boy that goes to one of the schools, which in this case, Sherwood Heights. I believe the article said he lives across the river. We won't hold that against him. He'll, he'll probably move to Auburn as he grows older. But in any case, we, we love seeing something like that. The, again, it just, it makes my heart flutter every time that we do something in one community or the other. It doesn't have to be just New Auburn. It can be any place in the city. But we need to work together, and we have to understand, we are one community on this side of the river, and we need to come out and work together. And we need people to come here, whether they think that we don't know what we're doing, or we do know what we're doing every day of the week. But we need you to come up front and at least say what you think. That's the only way that we'll get people involved. And, thank you, young lady. And at Hampshire Street, we did have two pretty good-sized meetings, and it talked about sidewalks, because Bob Stone was on us to say, we got to have meetings. And them meetings were put on by the city of Auburn, Dan Gulet, Gulet, whatever way we say his name. Sorry, Dan, I always screw it up. But anyways, they were there. They presented sidewalks, plantains. I was against the plantains, like you're against the bump-out sidewalks. And, I mean, it all goes together, but it was there. It was presented to the people that showed up there. I don't know all the comments, but I'm sure Dan has them somewheres, so people could actually see how many people commented and how many people didn't comment. So, I guess, other than that, and it was held at the Pal's, so it's easy to check back to find the notes and stuff. Thank you very much.
Counselor Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The good Counselor Walker, he understated. He put in, by him and the good Joe Gray, they put in a lot more hours than 48 hours, working their hearts out, building the, building the skating rink and making sure that the, the banking was done for the, for the sliding. And it, and it was a great event. Counselor Walker had me personing the table that had mittens and hats for a donation. And if you couldn't afford a donation for mittens, no kid was left with, or a grown-up was left without a mitten. And they had donations of, of hot cocoa. They had gallons of hot cocoa, and it was wicked good. And the Counselor Walker had his bakers from the United New Auburn make really fantastic cookies, as well as Dunkin' Donuts, gave out a lot of donut holes. And it was a well-attended event. And they even gave out free door prizes for a young, well, for kids that put their raffle ticket in whichever prize they wanted to win. And it, and like he said, it doesn't take much money to put on an event, and we should be giving more money so that we can have these little pod events all over the city. I also attended the ag study. It was a pretty good presentation, but I, too, was very disappointed that there wasn't more information on the existing property owners' farms in the ag zone, and more of their dilemmas, and the needs and concerns of them, because we need to do more to help them to exist in their properties and maybe be able to have their families live with them longer. I also attended, as a committee assignment sort of, the CDBG meeting, dealing with nonprofit agencies that have requested funding from the CDBG funds. And we figured out basically with what limited funds, who is going to get what, or at least, we tried to do the best we could with what we had, and we're bringing back those recommendations to the full CDBG committee. And then it'll be sent, brought to in front of the council for their blessing and support. In regards to LATC, the public transit and the budget presentation, when it comes forward, I'm going to be recommending that we fully support, fully funding the transit. And we can't look at dividing out monies according to population, because you can't do it, because if you look at what the transit...
Counselor Gary, if we could just have meeting notes versus debate?
Oh, I'm not debating it. I'm just trying to tell you that the economic input that it brings to the community and what we need for the city. I mean, if we're, we've got parking issues right now, and one of the ways that we can relieve some of that is if we can redefine some of the transit routes. So, if we fund, fully fund it, that may help relieve some of that, as well as one of the unintended consequences. Right now, most of the bus service from Lewiston is coming to Auburn to go to frequent our businesses. So, by cutting the service, the businesses in Auburn aren't getting the benefit that they were getting when we fully funded the service. And that is where I'll end it.
Thank you very much. There's a couple of things, I apologize, I forgot, that I'm going to do this in 30 seconds. For everybody that's watching on television, we do have some board and committee openings. I'm not sure if the website's been updated, but we did extend the application deadline to the 6th of February, which is tomorrow. So, I encourage everybody who wants, would like to get involved, there's some openings. It's always great when the application committee has multiple people to choose from for a fixed amount of openings. So, I encourage everyone to go and download the application and submit that to the city clerk's office, no later than tomorrow. Second, community block development grants and home funds. I also encourage everyone to spread the word to go online and look at the available home funds that, well, are frankly available for, either it be grant or low-interest loans, for facade improvements, renovations, and a lot of other really worthwhile programs. They're federal funds, and more often than not, they go unused by the general public. I know on a fixed income, those funds could be of great help to help you maintain your home and stay in your home. There's also one other program I want to mention. Stuff takes some digging. I will say that to the council and to the city staff. My goal is to consolidate in one easy document, resources that can help citizens do good things. The last one I want to talk about is our home-buying incentive program. We do have several different funds and programs available that will help, whether it be the Auburn Housing Authority or the city itself, to help people purchase a home, to go through the appropriate courses, so they understand fiscal discipline, and to help with down payment and real dollars towards that acquisition. Right now, you have to dig pretty hard to find all these programs. But again, I just want to let you know, in the upcoming weeks, we're going to make a concerted effort to try to make those at the forefront, so everybody knows and can access these, and it's no longer a mystery. So, that's my comment. I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Peter Creighton for his comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To add to what has already been said about the ag study, there was a question about the level of interest on the part of the city council and the mayor regarding the ag study. And I think the comments tonight has answered that question. There is a great deal of interest in, in the ag study and what's happening with that. I really appreciate the work that the committee's doing, the leadership that Mary Sylvester is showing as the chair. And I have met with Eric Cousins and Ken Meter since that last meeting to talk about how to capture more Auburn data, because that was obvious as one of the weaknesses of the, of the report. But I, I do appreciate the work that's being done by everyone involved. Also, would like to mention that on tax-acquired properties and city properties, this is a task that was mentioned to me when I was hired as city manager. And we have been meeting on this. Here's some of the data that we've been working on. There will be some action on this at the next council meeting with an update for the council on what's happening. I appreciate the staff's involvement in this, and Jill Eastman, who's helping to lead this effort, Jody DeRisco from my office. There's a lot of property that is involved, and I think we have a very systematic process that we're developing here. So, I think the council will be pleased with that when you hear the update at the next meeting. I also would like to mention, in terms of new streetlights that people may want to request because of the conversion that we're doing LED, that's been discussed. There is a process to follow. The requests for a new streetlight should go to, to me as a city manager, and there is a review process. I will be asking the city electrician and the police department for their recommendations. The police will look at the requests with safety or high-crime area in mind. And recommendations from the city electrician and police department will be... from the city electrician and police department will be forwarded to, to me. And I think that's a, a good process that we can follow, and I encourage the councilors to let me know if you have citizens that are interested in making a request for a streetlight that may have been removed previously. And I want to thank all the folks involved with the Winterfest and all the staff for the city, the leadership from the recreation department with Sabrina Best and the oversight from, from the assistant city manager Denise Clavat on that. And the 150th anniversary effort, I think, is getting off on the, the right foot. I was pleased with the staff meeting that we had. There were a lot of department heads that came to that staff meeting with the former mayor and assistant city manager and myself and other folks that were there. A lot of enthusiasm. People want to do a good job. They're really, I think, excited. And then the meeting in the evening, I thought, was very positive. Council Walker was there, Council Fornier. There's a lot of enthusiasm around this. So my compliments to Mayor Levesque on getting this going, and we've got a lot of work to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. One, one comment on the, on the lights. Wasn't, they're also going to be doing an audit and giving you a recommendation. This is a third-party firm on what they believe, which I'm sure will be inflated because they want to sell you more.
Yeah, that will be part of it.
That'll be part of it? Okay. I just want to make sure that was still there. Very good then. We're going to skip through, excuse me, not skip, we're going to move on right now to open session. This is the last open session of the night. If there's anyone in the public that would like to speak, none being right now, then we're going to move on. I'm not going to close the open session. We do not have any executive sessions tonight.
One question, Mr. Mayor?
Counselor?
It'll be short. This report, will this be on the website or is this on a website? And can we get an electronic version otherwise?
It will be on the website if it's not already on the website.
Okay, so I should be able to find it. Where would I find it? In studies, is one section for studies, will that be, will it be?
That's a good question, Counselor. I will find out for you.
Because I was looking for it before the meeting. I see that it wasn't up before the meeting, so. But I like to have an electronic copy of this one way or the other. This is a great little resource for the future as well.
Some great...
Especially when I go to the county budget and they start talking about things at the county budget, right?
Exactly.
I got county statistics here that they don't have, you know?
Go and watch. I'll go and watch.
That we pay for. Okay, very good then. I'm going to move to adjournment. Do I have a motion? I have a motion for Council Fornier to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion for Councilor Walker. All those in favor? All those opposed, abstain. This meeting stands in adjournment.